All right, it is Thursday, July 25th.
... at 26:36 PM. We call the Monday meeting of the Polk Park and Recreation District Order. All Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Pat Harden this evening. Tonight Commissioner Holly will be taking minutes. First order business is board issues. Any board issues?
I have a couple. For the August Board meeting, I think we need to add a couple of things. First, I think we should establish the process for moving from interim director to director. I think we need to set that process. It's typically been a very lengthy one in the past. Figure out how we would like to do that. And also, I mean, I think the director has the full support of the board, but I definitely think that it's probably high time that we do a performance eval and give him any insight that we may have. I think we've been a little -- things have been running really well and it's been nearly all consumed at times, but I don't think the board has given our director much insight and that might be that's just because things are going so well. But I still think we should add those two things.
And I would have to, with the first one, maybe it's semantics, but there isn't a process for moving from one to the other. There's a process for interviewing and identifying and that process is actually in our, I think it's in our bylaws.
Yes.
And so that process is identified and actually before we even do that, so we have a process and so for example, if we decided to undertake that process, I think talking about the timing is important. I think that is absolutely important.
So we talked about the timing of that process.
How about, may I make a suggestion?
Please.
In August, let's review because otherwise we're going to be putting something on a board issue that could lead into a discussion which should be under new business. So what I will do is for the August, I will say we will review the bylaws for hiring a director and discussing a timeline.
Perfect. Yeah, because we know that there are some things there that probably could benefit from being updated.
Okay.
I'm going to do a performance eval now.
It's got that on you.
Boom.
Okay.
Love it. Thank you.
All right, agenda changes.
No.
No agenda changes. Public comments?
Just brief. I didn't sign in, but I think it's been great how far we've come. It's hugely positive. I know there've been some negatives, I'm fully aware. I've been in back and forth contact with John Krantz and the Rotary and trying to solve the problems around the checks. And I certainly hope that we figure that out because I don't want to leave that money on the table, but bigger than that, I want to make sure that we continue to have strong bonds in our community and we're a respected entity. And the one thing I caution in relation to all that is I would carefully to not place blame on any one entity because I think we were set up as a district, I would say, almost for failure because this was an unprecedented situation. We had an interim director also working only 20 hours a week. Did he have a clear pass down also? Do we have a checks and balance system in place to prevent some of the obstacles that are now, we're faced with? Did he, I mean, we talk about having a director performance review, but does he really have clear, before you get to a performance review, does he really have a clear understanding of the expectations of his position at 40 hours a week? Because we really just started this, right? And I think a lot of people, including the board, I wouldn't blame the board either, have been put in unique and challenging situations for coming out of the closure. And we almost have to reinvent the wheel and you know, this will certainly not be reinvented by the time January rolls around and I'm assuming running at a pose, I probably will get enough votes. So I'll be in this with all of you as well. And everything's been operating really, we're winging it. We're winging it, right? Man, I can wing it with the best of them, but at a certain point, you have to say, okay, you know, we gotta do this by the book. There's no book. So I hope that as a team, and I think like a coach, because that's my background, as a team, we can overcome this and I really believe we have great people to overcome this. We've got the right people, okay, to work beyond these, I call them minor problems, honestly. And be great and be successful. But, and maybe I'm a little impatient, I've had to think long and hard about this and how I felt about it. Because I, you know, I'm a result, I want results, but we'll get there, it's just I don't want to neglect it much longer because I really feel like I don't want to go back to the way things were before, ever. And we could really, to me, unless we really start to move forward and really have high expectations and turn some things around, you know, we've had that risk. The same, well, we did it that way before or, you know, it's okay, it's okay the way it is or, I don't want to do that. I think we want to really set the bar high and figure out how to get there. And I think it will take everyone and I'm not sure exactly what the board's, you know, responsibility is in it, the director and the aquatics director and the maintenance and how you all come together, but I think we have to do a better job of working as a team to be successful in the future and set some things in place to avoid these pitfalls that have happened, you know? I mean, like when we were doing the inside of the, this side of the class, this side of the class, working and painting the offices and we just, we found a thing on Facebook to buy desks. We couldn't write a check to go buy something from the Department of Homeland Security and just on the minutes that were never, you know, the banking was still a problem at that point. Months have gone by, right? We just have to make sure we don't continue to allow months and months to go by when we can't operate.
Okay, well, thank you. Hold on. Approval minutes, we have a couple of minutes. We have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve the minutes of January 11th, 2018, June 28th, 2018, December 18th, 2018.
Oh, second.
As written.
Oh, sorry.
Those are the ones that are not written by Pat because Pat's not here to correct, she had, there were issues with most of her minutes, so they're just the ones that were not from Pat.
Copy. And I have a second.
I seconded, yes.
Thank you. All right, discussion.
Can I just have a, can I have a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Catching up, thank you.
So on the January 11th minutes, I just need the author, that's you Shane, right?
Yes, it is.
So that's, just so that we know who wrote them, I would put your name down at the bottom.
Thank you.
That's on the middle. If you would make that change.
Do we have, do we have those?
Yeah, the first three pages. It's this one?
No, I don't have it. Oh, yes, I have it. Ha ha.
And we've got stylistic thing. We've seen that before, but I think it, like you said, it was in that group that we, that got messed up. The June 28th minutes, Commissioner Shingelton, the vice chair, you called the meeting to order, that was Hoffmeyer, yes? In June 2018, he was the vice chair?
Uh huh.
I would just put the name in there, just to make it.
Recommend putting his name.
Yeah, just to be clear who that is because, you know, otherwise you have to, if you're wondering, it's too much pain.
So that's an amendment to your?
Yes. So the two amendments for those two, I think those are the only ones I had for the minutes that I talked about.
What was the first one? Sorry.
Oh, I wanted Shane's name at the bottom of his minutes. Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
And then the other one was December.
Yeah, and that's all the changes I have to those minutes that I recommended we approve.
All right. Further discussion?
My, I think we have looked at these before because my last name is spelled incorrectly throughout, so it's on December, not on the ones that I did. But on the Jan 11 ones, so it's a search of my case.
Oh yeah, you're right, you're right.
I remember doing this before.
Yep, we did, yep, we, are we sure we didn't approve these or? Yeah, because mine were all screwed up and so I think we basically didn't approve any.
I think we did because as much as it's not my favorite stylistic thing, I remember the-
We totally read this.
The hot microphone.
Yeah, yeah. No, I remember reading this, but I thought, I thought it was part of that group with mine that weren't complete and so I thought we just said, let's just wait.
I thought we had, but whatever, either way, if we do now, I would just request that we spell my last name correctly.
Oh yeah. So just do a search for Shingelton and it's?
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor of approving with the amendments?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passing now. All right, voucher review. And before we move on, thank you for this month getting all the outstanding minutes in there. I know what I'm doing, I want my wife and daughter on vacation.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve vouchers 8203 through 8257 in the amount of $84,526.24 and conduct payroll transfers from M&amp;O accounts to payroll account of $20,974.52.
Have a second.
Second.
All right, discussion.
So I do have a question on the vouchers. Voucher number 8230, just says revitalization project. That's a little too vague for me. So do we know what that is for $6,193.31?
It is probably the invoice that lists multiple items that were different phases of the project. There are invoices, if you guys would like, I can send you a copy of all of the invoices from the UMS that have all the different line items. Honestly, some of them are abbreviations and I look at them and I'm like, I don't know what that is or what that means. I could probably show Commissioner Hoffmeyer and he would be able to be like, oh, it's this.
Which voucher, remember again, I'm sorry.
It's 82, sorry, it's 8230. I feel like as long as we had something that was-
That went in the middle.
That maybe one of these two or one of these three people could just give us a better characterization because it just sounds super general and I know probably no one's going to look at it and question it, but it would be nice to have something that's like, it was, you know, if it was hardware for this or it was like just something a little more specific would be really nice.
Between Commissioner Hoffmeyer and myself, if I'm able to see the invoices, I can probably make that a little more tangible.
Okay, because I'll be honest, I don't need the invoices sent to me. That would be a waste of everyone's time. It really would. Because I'm assuming that when we get those invoices, that not only are they checked through the proper channels, but, you know, meaning like the expense channels, but for you guys to ensure whoever worked on it, that they're accurate.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so I mean, I trust that. It's just more of like having a characterization that like I understand better what it is and somebody from the public would also understand better what it is, that's all.
Each invoice has the portions of the approved quotes attached to it too, so 60% of this quote.
Oh, that's cool. Yeah, that's all, I mean, that's good.
One thing that happens, like the invoice for that much money, it may have six or eight different lines of items.
Sure.
I can only get a very limited number of characters in here.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, I sometimes summarize that because I can't fit it all.
Yeah.
But I can do like a footnote attachment or something that gives you guys a little more detail.
You know what, if, in cases like that, just, I mean, if, I'll be honest, if it were, if it were $300, I might have a different reaction to it.
No.
Because I'd be like, oh, okay, it was something as opposed to, I mean, $6,000 out of $84,000, that's, that's a really, it's a significant number. And so it just, you know, I know it takes more work, but it's truly something that to like the acting of a first person makes sense, would be great.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask because I had a little like sticker shock from these expenses. And I don't know if it's the fact that there were, like, yes, we expected these things, they just came in rolling in at a different time than the other stuff, or there were lots of unexpected things or a little bit of both. Both? Okay. It was just that thing where I like, I was like, ah, like sticker, I'm freaking out right now, man. And I just, I know it doesn't, I'm doubtful that there's anything or many things on here that we could have even done without and I understand that and it's kind of like when you get the bill, when you're getting your car fixed. They're like, well, couldn't you just take a couple, like, did you need all those gaskets? You know, I think, yeah, I think you know, they-
No, just, it doesn't matter.
Right, and so, you know, I understand that, it's just, so it's both, so it's really both expected, the timing of expected plus unexpected. Okay.
So I have a couple of questions to help me understand it.
I don't have any answers.
I know we won't get answers for those. I have two and I think you just answered some. We paid, within a week's time, we paid two insurance premiums?
Yes.
Is that going to be a normal thing in the future?
No.
Because I was like, that's like $9,000 within two weeks or seven days and I about fell off my chair at home reading that.
So, a brief explanation of that, we normally receive the insurance invoice via Rex's email somewhere around the 12th or 13th. On the 9th is the day that they tore our offices all apart for the project when we had volunteers in. So there was a delay in getting the invoice to be able to print to get the bill paid due to that. We got it as soon as we could and got it paid, but then by the time we were able to do that, it was almost time for the next one to come. So I went ahead and paid the first one as soon as I could and then the second one. So that's why we got so close together.
Okay.
But I guess, I mean, the difficult part for me of that is we all have, ours is all internet-based email and so my assumption is that you all have that as well. You have access to it via the internet.
We hadn't had access to any computers and we were all sitting in this room.
People have, like, I have a phone and I can access my district email and so we don't have, unless I'm misunderstanding, we don't have a client server base, I mean, that's outdated technology unless we're using like certain types of software. It's not client server, it's, I mean, it's, you know, it's cloud-based. So I guess that's where I'm a little thrown by, like, we didn't have access to it. Because that, if that's really true, that feels like we're doing something wrong.
So those invoices are typically printed in a packet that a copy of it has to go to the county. And I can look at it on my phone, I can't print it on my phone.
Okay, but I mean, you can print it in Office Max, you can print, that's where I'm not, I'm not understanding because I feel like, I feel like especially for something that of all the things literally that we do, paying our insurance, I mean, in my own personal life, that's, I hate it, but it's one of the most important things that I have to do because I have to do it. And so I guess I just feel like if we have things that we have this single point of failure that's based on a piece of hardware, then we're doing it wrong. Does that, does that make sense to you?
No, just saying, yes.
Okay, because-
And I thought you were saying absolutely.
Right, and I, but it's like, I feel like we have to move past that and so we feel like we have other risks there. Because to me, our computers not being available to us, there are very few things that that should have prevented. So, and so if there's a risk assessment that you need to do in order to identify how you get to things in, because really, so, sorry, it used to be called disaster recovery continuity, business continuity planning that says if, if suddenly, you know, whatever happened and we had no power in this building, what would we do? I'm not trying to make work for anybody, but we probably should know, I mean, our bills are still due, nobody cares that we were put in a new floors. I'm not, I'm not trying to be flippant about it, but it's the truth. You know, it's the truth and so if we need to identify those things, then it sounds like that's probably an activity that needs to take place.
I have come forward with a plan that I'm establishing for the bill side of things for incoming bills and I now have a running tally and checklist for when the bill is generated, when typically received and its due date, so I have a checkbox as they come in. So that will help me better stay on top of things and if there's something that comes to Rex's email or Matt's email or Jenny's instead of mine, then I have my date where I need to go to them and say, hey, I still need this invoice so that I can follow up with them that way. And it would not have helped in this particular circumstance as far as our server being inaccessible, but I do have the ability that I can access that stuff through my home computer and in the future I would be able to print it there if I had to or send it to Office Max if I had to.
Right, but the mail isn't-
So I think we have a plan.
Right, but the mail isn't server-based, that's what I'm saying, the mail is not server-based.
If that comes via email.
I understand that.
So, yeah, so I would be able to access it at home and print it.
Right, right.
Or send it to Office Max if they're there, so I have that.
Right, understood. And if we have, if we have critical files residing on a server, there should be a backup somewhere and a restore, I mean, a restore might be expensive, but if it was important enough, we should understand what that turnaround time would be to restore. I used to do this.
I believe we protect this back, you know, some offsite now.
Okay.
That's changed.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that's, again, it doesn't, the email is a completely separate, it's a completely separate thing, but I mean, that's, thank you for ensuring that that happens because yeah, if we have critical files, we should have a way to access them. So it sounds like we're starting to address that business continuity portion.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah.
That doesn't seem to bill me as to where there's been bills back on purpose, there was last month too. Real quick though, and this is very related, so let's roll through it real quick. Distribution list. We were not on the Island County, the board, the board was not on the Island County Auditor's distribution list. It almost cost us $895,000.
Okay. I'm going to interrupt. I'm going to interrupt. Does that have to do with the voucher review?
It absolutely does.
Okay, thank you.
For the insurance company, when I heard that there's, when I heard that invoice is only going to one email, that's a problematic and I think we need to update that distribution list and I think that as important as insurance is, maybe the board should also be on that distribution list. That way if there's a notice that we're going to lose our insurance again, so it should at least, it should at least go to admin. If it's only going to one email box, that's an issue.
I agree with you there.
So let's at least-
I agree, single source of failure, point of failure is always a good, you know, bad idea. I think, you know, Rex and maybe somebody else on the-
Perfect.
You know, but I think us, we'd be overstepping that balance between oversight that we're supposed to provide and the operational which you're supposed to provide, so.
If the Island County Auditor did not put the board on the distribution list and risk her job, we would have lost $895,000 and we will touch on that later in the meeting I suppose at the end because that timeline is coming back around.
I think, I mean, if we need to table this conversation because I feel like it is unrelated, but it sounds like, I mean, I'm confused because there was no negative change, so I'm not sure why there's suddenly an issue. So I realize I'm, I'm jumping in the hole that I've asked you to fill in and that's, so that's not fair, but.
Okay. On the vouchers, I have a couple of questions. I know we did May Day late in May and once again, thanks to Keller Williams and all the folks from there and all the other folks that showed up. But the New Leaf came and mowed and trimmed the pool on the 6th of June, right after we did May Day, and the Scotsman in me who's a little thrifty says, wow, two weeks after I mowed the lawn, I had somebody else mow the lawn for the price of $230,000 and that makes me turn red. So, no, was it more than two weeks? Was that appropriate?
Keller Williams, when they came and volunteered that day for us, I requested they not mow.
Oh, so they did, so, okay, cool. That answers that question.
And this is-
To save the coming.
Got it.
And two mowing here and four out in Lafayette to turn those.
Right. Thank you. And I know I've asked this before and I know you've told me before. What the heck are we getting the CO2 food grade for?
Brings the pH down.
Brings the pH down in the pool. Thank you. I will ask that again. The tow battery replacement of $317.21. Tow battery? What tow battery?
Oh, for the van. We had to tow the van.
So it's for a tow and a battery?
Yeah.
Copy, thank you. Okay, hold on. And then there was a Visa charge. Is there any question about, any other questions?
Well, the Visa usually is annotated with, I mean, more than just Office Max or Amazon.
So, I realized this morning that I could not send you guys the copy that had everything annotated, so I can go through that with you guys?
No, let's just, let's just ask and if there's something we have a question on. What's the COL recreation online? It was $250, three times, all on the 15th of April.
Those were the AFO courses for Shane and Matt.
Ah, okay.
In March, we had two charges to the Acorn Motor Inn.
That was our Life Garden of the Year sign director for lodging.
I'm sorry?
Our Life Garden of the Year sign director, that was his lodging at the Acorn.
Oh, he came and gave a course.
Okay, that would be wonderful. Got it, thank you. Just sitting here going, all right, and then you just asked that one. That's all I have.
So the other thing that I have requested is, and everyone can feel how they want to about it, but is a more detailed, actually not even more detailed, a payroll report. So I completely understand if, so based on that and based on some lack of details here, my intention, even though I'm the one who brought the motion, my intention is about no. And I'm not asking anybody else to agree with me in that respect, but I do believe that we need to start getting detailed payroll reports. So it doesn't necessarily have to include the name, but it does need to include some little detail as to the role that's being performed and the number of hours and how much is being paid out. You know, I reflected on that after we were potentially not going to approve vouchers without details and it was like, what's the difference? It's something that we should probably have always been looking at, like, looking at and so for me, it's like, it's kind of a like, oh my gosh, I can't believe, I never thought about this before. I don't believe that it's an oversight by anybody's part because at least in our lifetimes here, my understanding is it's never been provided, but I do believe it's something that's required. So I would just ask you to think about that a little bit and if you agree with me, just if you can make that request or note that you agree so that, you know, we can kind of say, yeah, we would like that moved forward.
So for that, you would like it to include the position, number of hours in the total?
I mean, I think, I think at a minimum.
Okay, because your monthly P&amp;L gives you a position by department and the amount per payroll for the month for that.
But the difference, I'd really like it related to, I'd really like it a separate report.
Okay, so if I were to pull this out and create a separate document from it that also shows you the total number of hours for each department?
Sure.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm including everything you'd like.
Yeah, and it would have to, obviously it's going to have to match.
Are you looking at, say like 15 lifeguards, not like to say their names, but 15 lifeguards and how much?
Absolutely. I don't know that the number of people, right, because it's really about the hours, right? Because we could have 15 people working a total of 30 hours or we could have two people working a total of 30 hours. It's really more about looking, I think the real want here is to understand where are our efforts going that's leading to what we know amounts to, I think typically about 60% of our actual budget. I know that that's not the case now, I haven't knew about that and I have had that conversation, but it typically amounts to over half of our spending every year and so it's just to have some detail about, because then the other thing that I think that this begins to build is over time, so year over year, you then have a history that you can look at and say, what's, why is this different? Like, what are we doing, what are we doing better, what are we doing maybe not as well? And so it's about, to me, also gathering some historical data that allows you to understand the differences or make decisions. So I think it's different. The other part that's really difficult is when we get online, when we get those, the P&amp;Ls.
Sigma Psi Tau's.
Right, so if there's, if you can justify them, because on most devices, most of us can't, I can't look at it, so I'll be honest, I haven't looked at these because I can't. Because most people don't have the capability, I think you have to have a specific Adobe I, I think you have to have a specific Adobe function, but to where you can rotate it. And like, I used to have that, but I don't have it anymore. So it's, it's that thing where it's like, yep, it's nice to know that it exists, but I can't do anything with it until I can actually look at it.
So one more question. Would it be helpful, along with that, if we were to include, like, our total number of operating hours?
Yes, sure. That'd be great. Yeah. I mean, I don't think that more data is ever a bad thing. It's...
Well, I know how you like to print numbers the way I do, so...
Right. And it's, I mean, it's, it's really more about making informed decisions and approvals than anything else.
What is it you're looking for?
Pay, payroll, payroll summary is, I think, I mean, I think it's a summary, because we're not, it's not like, I wanna know that, you know, Matt worked this many hours. I mean, I understand that, you know, that that might end up being how it breaks down, but, but that's not what I'm looking for. It's really based on a position or a role or whatever. Thank you.
Further discussion? There's motion on the table? No further discussion. All in favor of approving vouchers 8203 through 8257 for the amount of $84,526.24 and transferring to the M and L account payroll, a total of $20,974.52 for a joint total of $5,576.24, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All nays?
Nay.
So Commissioner Holly, Commissioner Merrill voted aye. Commissioner Singleton and Commissioner Hoffmeyer voted nay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
May I retract my vote?
Oh, boy. I wish I had Robert Schwoles, because I'd...
I agree with Commissioner Singleton, but it obviously was a vote ahead. So I would like to vote yes.
Changes the vote to yes, so...
I think as long as we all accept the...
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Anybody gets tested, right?
As long as we're gonna be like...
Yes.
So, so now it's, that's approved?
Yes.
Three to one, yes?
And I would ask that next month, the changes that Commissioner Singleton has asked for, be added for next month's financials, please, because does anybody disagree?
Do not disagree. You're totally agree.
All right. Committee reports. I'll go first with the Community Action Board. We had our first meeting. We sent a lot of invites out. We didn't even get a lot of responses back, and that includes from some normal, love Pat, thank you, from Rotary and Christine, Eskimos, from the chamber. So, and that's fine, it's the summertime, it's a busy time, but we did get some interesting participation from some community partners. First meeting was very productive, and the biggest thing that came up, there were a lot of good ideas, a lot of folks that don't understand how a special Hacks District government works and what we can and can't do. And so there was quite a bit of education in a two and a half hour meeting, and I finally threw the towel in. But the biggest and best, I think, suggestion we had out there was to do more subcommittees. And that's something that the board has already talked about many times. Subcommittees?
Subcommittees.
Because that's where you get most of the work done. You know, the business meeting we have once a month is the time for us to sit down and approve things as a board. And the work, we should work on our reports and have those made. So that was the biggest thing made. A lot of, a lot of enthusiasm still carried over, which was great. And so there's gonna be another meeting, probably gonna wait until school goes back into session before we have another meeting and the summer's over, just so I can, just so we can have more people come. So, great first meeting. I'm sure it's gonna go further once school's back. That's what we had. Clover Valley Committee?
Nothing this month.
Nothing this month. All right. No action item review. Moving on to unfinished business. Employee Handbook Part Two, are due.
Okay, so there were several things that were pulled over still from the, the first part of the Employee Handbook to be done. I have the, I've just seen the personal appearance. Does everyone, did everyone get that?
Yes.
Okay. I would ask everyone to look it over, and we can vote on it next, next meeting. And hopefully we'll have the other things that...
I believe they were in here, weren't they? Where they were, I saw...
There's an Exhibit B. It feels like a... Well, that was, we already voted on that.
We did.
That Exhibit B was what we voted on. So that we voted on. The things that were still extant for that was, we have to redo the pay schedule, we have to redo the job descriptions, and this. Those were the three that I remember in my head were the big ones to be done. And then some of the other was, I just have to tweak some of our, not instructions, the way we do things, because it's, there have been new laws written since we wrote basic things about, you know...
Procedures.
Procedures, thank you, that's the word I want. New laws have been published since we published our procedures, and I just need to make sure that we are not out of step with the law. And so I hope to get that done and get to you Book Number Two, which will be the executive procedures. And actually, Book Two and Three should get to you a rough copy next meeting that we can then vote on the meeting, the September meeting, if that makes sense.
It does.
Can you ensure that it has coin box telephone?
Yes, I will.
I have one question on here that might, might help me next month.
Yes.
Swim instructors, I'm sure we have mountain instructors as well. Maybe I don't spend enough time in the pool. What is a modest one-piece swim suit? Is that...
That's for females.
Yes, and it does say no speedos.
Does it specify that then, further down?
Yes, it does. It does say no speedos in there.
We, we have taken out, so, so just, because I think it helps for us to address this. We, it was, it was extremely gender biased and a little strange and very 1980s, I'll just say it. It was super 1980s, the way that it read. And so this is, I believe, and I haven't seen it yet, this is an attempt to homogenize, if I can use that word, but the language to, to, I think, address the current climate.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
It was bad.
It was really bad.
Oh, it's terrible.
And this is a lot shorter, I can tell.
Given some recent hires, I feel like you have to be sensitive when you work in these.
Well, and, and some, I would think that some things also, I mean, some things are gonna be based on, if someone has a preference.
Right.
You know, if they have a preference that isn't harmful, that still promotes safety and is still professional, then, I mean, if, if this is homogenized enough, then like, okay, cool, that's what you wanted to do? That's cool.
Right.
Okay.
I thought it was well-written, so I read it very, very...
We got an attorney that goes over this broadly.
Do we have an attorney?
We have an insurance company.
Insurance company that has, that has somebody that actually does that work for us.
That's for, just for the low, 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 low price of $68,000 a year? They will complimentary read things like this for us.
That's all.
There's a risk assessment department.
All right. That's all for that. Business Plan Review. I know, I was supposed to change that title, and I apologize. I couldn't remember what I was supposed to change it to.
I, I don't know, because I technically don't even know what it's supposed to mean anymore. We had talked about...
Strategic plans?
Wendy's Review.
Well, no, because we're not quite there yet, because there's other, there's other to-dos before that. But the one thing that we had talked, we had talked with the program Subcommittee, which we had said, so that's, we had formed that. So technically, so how about this? Big change, real shattering. Let's take out Business Plan Review, and let's just put a, we can, we can add a space for the Program Subcommittee. Wait, is it Program? It's Program Development. That's what it is. Sorry. That's Program Development Subcommittee, which we said, so last month, my report was that we had recognized that with all the other activities taking place, that we would look at that in the fall. So there is also no report.
I'll put it under the Committee Reports then.
Perfect.
Because that's where it belongs.
Yeah.
Where do we access that for the public, so they know, oh, there's this meeting?
You know what? I'm looking at the website. I looked at it today. Looks good. I think there's room to do that on the commission page. But we require more changes, but I think we can, can we do that?
We would probably need to be sure it's not so far buried, like...
Donut's next board meeting, young man.
Maybe, maybe that's his brain, and he just had a really good idea. You don't know that.
Donut's next.
Exactly. You don't know. I've watched a lot of Black Mirror. Sorry.
All right, so we're gonna move that to Program Development under the Subcommittee. Clover Valley Proposal Review. Speaking of our wonderful insurance company, have we gotten anything back from these folks?
No, no. I'm beginning to think that our contact is still aren't working here, because he won't get back to me.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go, you know, back to his, the reason, the way I found him before, go back and see what's going on.
I, I have at least two names, and I'm positive that I do.
Okay.
Do, do you need me to?
Yeah.
To access, I mean, somebody should search my mail, but I'll just go, it's fine. All right, so...
Because I'd really like to give Justin, the folks out there, an answer, so...
So the one thing that I did do, and I don't know if you read it, because it's...
Wait a minute, who's Justin?
Is it Justin or...
Well, Justin's one of the, Brad, Brad.
Brad, Brad, that's, sorry, Brad.
At his request, I sent Rex a copy of the process that was given to, well, the process that we requested regarding property from our, from the attorneys a couple of years ago, just meaning...
But we need to know for not just the Clover Valley, but for other things, what is the process going for?
Right, no, I know. And I, I mean, part of it was, we have, we have, whether we love the process or not, we do have one. Part of it is, are we allowed to, you know, is this in this special circumstance? Because if you follow that process, then the answer to their proposal would be no. But, I mean, I realize that really, it's a separate question from that. But he does have a copy of that. I don't know if I sent that to everybody, or I probably just sent it to him. Okay. Contact, so I need to finish writing that, or I'm gonna forget what I'm supposed to send.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, and that's it for unfinished business. New business. Make this quick. I put Financial Reviews, Budget Review, and Budget Workshop. I talked to Rex, the director, about this a couple of days ago. We need to do some things going forward. First and foremost is, as was mentioned during public comment, this is an unusual year for us. And one of the things we're doing by, on the fly is, we need to review and amend our budget for the year. Because our prior budget did not show us with a levy. We actually have two. One with a levy, one without. We never moved from that, and we need to do that soon. So to do that, we need to have a workshop to amend the budget. You and I talked, you needed time, now that everything's back online and working, to get that together. When do you think we would be ready to look at a budget amendment workshop?
So as opposed to the one we've already scheduled?
When is the one that we already have scheduled?
I believe...
The 8th of August.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. I totally forgot about that.
Right, we made, yeah, we made that, and my expectation was to present him with my thoughts, because I got them, but about an amended budget at the beginning of next week. But I don't know if that buys you enough time. I mean, that's, you would have to feel comfortable with that.
Sure.
Is that still gonna give you enough time? I'm so sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. Is it at 6:30 at night? I knew the date. I didn't...
I don't, I don't remember that.
Hold on.
I don't, I don't have that in front of me.
That's why I don't know, because I didn't even put it on there. I will go back and listen to the minutes and find out what time it is.
I can, I know I have it in my book. I just didn't bring, I just remember the book.
How about if, because you said 8 August to me?
Yeah.
On the phone, and I remembered it, because I looked and I didn't have anything scheduled. So if you would just send an email to everybody, and don't, you know, nobody reply all, but just tell us what time it is?
Yes.
So that we can put it in our calendar.
So we can do the amended budget on August the 8th. And then in September, will that be enough time, Rex, as we move forward from the amended budget, to start preparing a budget for next year? Will we have enough data from in September to start looking at next year's budget? Knowing that we're going to have to amend the budget probably before the spring, just because by then we'll have a whole year of data, not, not... Okay. And the new board will have to look at that early and not wait until June or July, because then we'll have a year of concrete data to work on.
And where are the obligations for submitting that, just on...
We...
By November 30th.
By November...
We have to have it into the county.
We have to have...
The amendments due.
I think it's two days earlier.
It's not.
I think it's two days earlier than...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's more of, if you look at even any corporation, usually there's a quarterly review to say, you know, so, so, you know, Q1 has a certain set of objectives that you kind of go, are we setting the right targets for the year? And that's usually a pretty big one. In our case, because we're so seasonal, it's, it's not... You know what I mean? And what I mean by that is our bills vary, you know, that sort of thing. But, so really for us, the half-yearly thing is a bit more important to just say, how far off are we? Because like, no one's going to jail over this, but really it's about having integrity, right, in your budget. Instead of not like, oops, we were over by $200,000, you know?
Transparency for the taxpayer.
Exactly. It's, I mean, it's really about integrity to say, we're spending what we...
And can you give the...
If, if, if we amend it significantly, yes, we do have to sign it, and then we have to send it down to the county.
Oh, I didn't think we did. Okay, never mind.
And as a note, Commissioner Hoffmeyer's pointed out, due to Turkey Day falling on the last week in November, if that's correct?
27th, yes.
Yeah, the 27th is when the budget will be due this year. So it won't be due on the 30th, it'll be due on the 27th, because of a four-day weekend.
And actually, the auditor, and that's what I was gonna bring up, the auditor had, we took that team to the baseball game a couple of weeks ago. So they just...
Well, I'm meeting that month, is the 21st, so...
We should be good.
Yeah.
But something to keep in mind. All right, so August the 8th, and Wendy, thank you for sending out the time for that to all.
In, in advance.
All right, that's all for that. Thank you. Swim school fee schedule, Ms. Jenny?
Do we have something?
Yeah, sorry. Rex has copies of it, so...
Well, what I have is a current comparison between what it was eons ago and what it was closing. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
By eons ago, are you saying when we close the pool?
Yeah.
Exactly.
So that's like that long ago.
It's your most recently approved.
It was, it was B.C., it was before me.
B.R., before Rex.
No, before, sorry.
Yeah, that's who.
Yeah.
We are coming in...
Weren't you like, like, before the pool closes, weren't you like 30?
Sorry, sorry. It was, it was probably...
It's a soft hard right there.
We have a bridge, and, yeah, that's, I'm sorry.
Good thing the recording's set on.
I had to go for it, man. So basically, I did a little bit of research on the number, so a little background. At my previous employment, two previous places, we, that's all we did at Safe Splash was swim lessons. What we saw, and it's been researched over and over, is that lower class sizes allows for a greater progression through swim lessons. The problem with a lower class size, when you were coming in at $6 per lesson, you're like, basically breaking even. So I wanted to go from six kids in a class to just four. I have seven instructors currently, so we are gonna be able to get all of the kids that came in for assessments into lessons.
We are.
For our session. Yes, we will.
Good.
So we had 238 assessments in the last two weeks. I started building classes, and I fully believe that we are gonna be able to get every single kid into lessons.
I see.
And that is within twice a day, four days a week, for the first session. And it's gonna change a little bit in the fall, but people's schedules changes, so I think we're still gonna be okay. But I believe we're gonna be able to accommodate everybody. The fee increase is only by $3 per lesson.
But they're also getting more attention. I, I read your presentation that you gave last month. I read through it, and I thank you so much for that, and I totally agree with everything. It was like, it made sense to me. And the, the students are getting more time with the teachers. I can't believe parents are gonna be upset about the increase in price when they're getting more time with an instructor.
Yeah, and the way I've written the curriculum, I'm going, it's a hybrid of WSI and what I've come from and some of my own spin on things. It's similar to what Ankoris teaches, but a little bit better, I believe, because it's my curriculum. But we're coming in at the exact same price. But we're coming in at the exact same price as Anacortes, however, with lower class sizes, we're going to be able to progress these kids who have been stuck in a Level 1 for two months or longer, to a Level 2, a Level 3. And the way it works is, we can have a Level 1 kiddo be put in a Level 2 class, so that there's, you know, if we're questioning it, we'll just throw them into a Level 2 and, and go with it. I have a training schedule laid out for the instructors, so it's gonna, I'm gonna be very hands-on with it in the beginning. So, that's my.
I apologize, I wasn't listening.
It's okay.
Somebody looks, somebody who's been away from the district for a couple years, just moved back and was wiping at me.
Oh.
I apologize.
You're fine.
No.
I was like, isn't something going on?
She was just waiting.
I will say that we did, we did punch the numbers, and even with the fee increase, we're just barely going to break even with it. But I think if we do a slow increase in prices, people will be less like shocked, it won't be such, such a sticker shock.
I will say, the prices that we, that we did before the closure were still well below, we weren't making the money on those.
Right.
And we knew that, and we decided it was okay.
Yeah.
But, no, I, I liked this.
Can I ask a question about, okay, so, so, I, the only thing that I wonder, and, and this isn't based on history, it's based on literally where we are moving forward, if, if there is enough of a difference between resident and non-resident. Meaning, I, I wonder if we want, and, and I don't know, I don't know what you base these on, but I believe that somewhere we need to demonstrate value to our residents who are paying the taxes.
I agree, and I came in low purposely, because I wasn't sure where everybody's minds were at. I would like to go from 12 to 15 per lesson, just because it's, like you said.
So if you, if you would entertain what you thought would be appropriate right now for the non-resident, I'd like to hear that.
I mean, I think 15 per lesson is, is still fairly reasonable.
So do you think that 50%? I, see, the, and I know, like, we might overthink it, and you're the expert, and I'm never going to question that, but.
I wouldn't call myself a complete expert yet, still.
But this is your profession.
Yeah.
And for me, this is like, I'm a bit of a, I mean, I, I try to be involved, but I'm a bit of a tourist, either way.
Yeah.
But, like, percentage-wise, like, there, it might be, like, it might be fair to have a consistent increase in percentage.
Correct.
So 40% or whatever.
Right.
Or if you just feel a certain way about something, but for me, I, I believe that, that we need to value our residents enough, and I don't, I don't, I think I'm making the case that we all are agreeing to, because I don't see anybody flipping out about it.
Right.
But, so I would, I would probably say, look at a percentage and go, be consistent with it. I don't know if that's 50%, I don't know.
I was just looking at it as an even, like, number.
Sure.
So that when I say, like, this is $15 per class equals this amount per month.
Okay.
To make it, because people aren't like, typical things, and percentages go over the general public's head, so I was trying to keep it simple.
Round numbers, as opposed to $14.34?
Right.
And I'm like, so what, like, what are you telling me?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fair.
Private lesson or viable class?
So they are getting, it'll be, in three-week sessions, if they're going twice a week, they get six lessons. So it's essentially $10 per lesson and $60 a month, or $60 per the session.
Okay.
So.
And how long is, is a class?
The, so, levels, parent taught through Level 5, or 30 minutes.
Okay.
Our Level 6, which will be our swim team prep, will be 45 minutes.
Okay.
And I think the swim team prep, ideally, I would like it to be a little bit more, but we don't have enough interest in it quite yet.
Yeah.
We're not there yet, so we'll address that down the line.
Okay.
You got to build it.
So, so for you, so you, so you're saying 15 at the preschool and school age, you would, non-resident, you would potentially say 15?
Yes.
Aqua taught.
Sorry, I'll let you do it.
So the aqua taught.
Shut up.
I mean, I, I felt like $8 per lesson, even for a resident, was a low, low, but, I mean, it's, it's always going to be lower, because you're, parents are water.
Right.
So I would probably go up to 12.
Okay.
For that.
And for private?
56.25 is what you get if you do it at 1.5.
You were going to do it. It's longer than I thought. And I mean that in the nicest way possible.
Well, she did it a while ago, she's just been sitting there waiting to say it.
Um, I, I mean, I think $40 for, per lesson, for a private lesson out of a resident, is pretty good, like, I would.
Not if we're, not if we're only charging the resident 37.50.
Well, that's, oh.
So if we're charging the resident 37.50.
You're right, okay, I was looking at that for 1.5, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if you, if you go 1.5.
Right.
It's 56.25.
So then, let's go up to 58.
Is that, is that, is that reason, that's, but, I mean, like, is 50, like?
50 would be reasonable, I mean, think of it as a private lesson, you're getting a one-on-one instruction type with an instructor. It's literally your kid and the instructor, they're going to learn more, they're going to, and, so, to me, you're paying for what you get. And people who have the money are going to pay it.
Because if they have the money, then, and they're out of district, they should be paying it, because they're, they're not paying the taxes.
Remember the bus and the limousine?
Exactly.
Sorry.
This, we had a big discussion about bus versus limousine.
A long time ago, yeah.
Well, I just, I'm just saying the quality and the one-on-one time alone should speak for itself.
So we're doing what here?
I don't know.
Okay, so.
It's 30 minutes.
Oh, that's 30 minutes.
But 30 minutes, one-on-one, you're getting.
One-on-one, that's.
So if you, if you're getting, if you have four kids in a class, and you're averaging, if you're averaging 90% active in a class, each kid is getting roughly seven to 10 minutes of one-on-one time. We're talking 30 minutes.
Yeah.
So.
So, 58, I like.
58, 58.
58, that's a little bit higher, so it's good.
Okay.
If they don't want to pay for the limo, they can pay for the bus.
I, I'm tracking now, thank you.
I got some things, whatever.
And for semi-private? What does semi, does that mean you're sharing with one person?
So you're sharing with one other person.
Two students per instructor.
So it's two persons, two students per class. So I've already got a lady who's reached out to me first at my private, it's for kids, she's got two kids that are special needs, got to do better one-on-one. Again, it's two to one, you can split it 15 and 15, so you, if you don't want to pay for that private lesson time, do you have a question?
No, keep going, I, I do have a question, but I'm, I'm formulating how to say it.
So you have two, so with a semi-private, they have to bring the second student, we're not going to provide the second student.
Copy.
Okay?
So 20.
How I did it previously was, I would spend 15 minutes with one kid, 15 minutes with the other, so they're getting 15 minutes of one-on-one time, for actually a cheaper price than the private lesson. You're getting the same, pretty much the same amount of instruction time, so.
And would like, 28 be?
Yeah.
A reasonable number for that?
Wouldn't it just be half of 58? I mean, that's how we priced the other one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
This is true. That's exactly, I did all the math, like, 38.
So, and I know we're kind of throwing you for a.
No, 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 you're fine, this is.
29 is the, is half.
Yeah.
So, I got a question, and it's something you just mentioned.
Look at the non-verbal there.
Um, sorry, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, um, so, there's a, I mean, I'll go back to what I know. In the military, we have something called a exceptional family member.
Okay.
All right, and that deals with our, and actually NASWII has been recognized as a horrible place for people with exceptional family members. We're in the bottom of the name. So, shh, shh.
Never been stationed here, I don't know.
But when we look at that, we, one of the things they look at is, what programs do we have for inclusion?
Right.
Right? And for those families to find inclusive programs, they have to do some serious travel. So it would be nice if we said, you know what, there, there, there is a difference, but we want to treat them the same, right? So we want to give them, we want to give them swim, swim lessons, it's just as a matter of fact, if not more so, because otherwise they're going to have to travel.
Right.
And right now, the only place they can go for Special Olympics is Anacortes, because of past history here. I, as one voting member of this board, would love to see that change. You mentioned, and the, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because you just mentioned she has two special needs children.
Right.
I would love us to have a different rate for exceptional family members, I don't know if that's the right term, because that's what I'm used to, I don't know how to do that and still be inclusive.
So.
Because the last thing we want to do is be exclusive.
Right, and that's, and that's, I'm being very sensitive to that.
Thank you.
And I am going based off of, so I actually have a history of building an adaptive, which is what we call it.
Thank you very much.
Adaptive swim lesson program.
Everybody write that down, myself included. I'm not kidding, I'm not kidding.
Yeah, that's the best way to describe it, it's adaptive, because we are adapting to
their needs without making them feel like they're separated. So the biggest thing, and I will, and I will be rolling this out, it's going to take me some time, I, I have had numerous trainings in this, it was one of the things I ran when I, at my previous job, I was primarily the special needs adaptive. So what we did is, we started in private lessons, and we gave them a discounted rate for the private lesson, with the idea of transitioning them into a group lesson when they were ready.
Okay.
And that's what I'd like to see happen, because ideally, that would be, you know, that would be the best thing, but we do have kids that cannot function in a, in a group setting, and then it affects all the other kids. And I'm not saying that to be insensitive, that's the facts. We have kids that are autistic that, I mean, I had a kid this week that came in to do a, I scheduled a time to assess him outside of everybody else, because he threw such a fit, and screamed, and cried, and I could not get him in the water this time. So I offered them a free 30-minute lesson with me, so that we could really get an assessment and see where he was at.
Thank you.
And that's what, I think it's really important to me, and I, and I will build it, but it's going to take me some time. So I'm being very honest with families and saying that adaptive is coming, but it's probably not going to come until the fall.
Okay. Is there a way, and I, I'm not going to ask you.
It's okay.
Is there a way, Director, that we can recognize that if we have an adaptive family prior to this, is there some leeway in fee schedules that?
Are you asking if, if there's a way to identify?
No, I'm, I, what I'm asking is, is there a way we can, because you, you mentioned the fee schedule being different.
Does anyone have any reimbursement?
Well, it's not only that, but I think, so, but I was told by someone who has been, who has been waiting for something just like this for a really long time, that there are opportunities that if we have the right certified instructors, that we can get reimbursement.
Yes.
And I, and I know who to, and I know who to, I mean, I know the person who had an idea of that.
So if you can give me their contact information.
Absolutely.
The company that I worked with a lot in Colorado was called Developmental Pathways. So they get, they give a CES waiver, which is basically like, they get full funding through them, and they pay us directly for that, or it's 50 funding where they pay 50 and the family pays 50. And I just don't know where to look for it.
I, I think, I think I can at least get you on the right track, because I know that was something that was mentioned to me, and I was like, file this, because I don't know what to do with that.
No, yeah, seriously, like, I know how to work at it, and I've done it, and that's what I do.
Thank you, I, I knew that's rabbit hole, and it's not towards this, and I know I'm not the only commissioner that has a passion for this.
No, but it comes, yeah, don't look for it.
There's the kids from the high school.
Yes.
Right, exactly, and actually, the, 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 right, the person that I'm referring to is a caregiver for one of those folks, so.
Shane.
Yeah, first of all, Sean, Jenny, thanks for partially prying me off of the ceiling. Because for so many years in here, at least with the previous swim school setup, all of the kids taking private lessons were kids that couldn't fit in the existing swim school structure. And that brings up, that brings up another issue too, that's directly related to that. In the past, the swim instructors for private lessons were allowed to choose which kids they were going to teach, and the kids with disabilities could never get lessons in this building, and I've got so many emails in the past about it.
That's not going to happen.
So that's why I said, so thanks for prying me off of the ceiling there, because, and, and, and you segued into a very, it was good for both of you. So I think that's a good thing. I'm pretty sensitive to us having a non-resident fee proposal for this year. The reason being, we didn't have a pool last year, and Camp Casey offered some lessons, and they did not gouge out of district people there without a pool this year, Center Woodbury without a pool this year. I'm certainly way more sensitive to the non-resident, resident rate this year than I would be next. I know that it probably does not change the level.
I take issue with calling it gouging the non-residents. They're just not, they're not paying any money to support this facility like the taxpayers are, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Does Camp Casey run on a levy, just like?
No, Camp Casey's owned by Seattle Rivers.
So I think, I think there's a difference there, just my opinion, but I'll go with that.
I, I think the other part of it for me is that our residents, so we talked, you know, Jenny, Jenny talked about, we haven't talked about it, but that there's really no margin at all. And, and my guess is that calculation doesn't take into account any overhead outside of employment, right? Because we haven't done, we haven't looked at, at land costs at all. And so, and so part of this is ensuring that, that there's a contribution that goes to things like fixing the building, and heating the water, and the water itself. And so that's, really, it's the, our, our residents, our taxpayers are already paying that. And, and we're giving them a break for the fact that they already contribute through their property taxes for that, and so, and, and so that's, I mean, I think it's important how we frame it, because I don't think we're gouging them, but we're asking them to contribute Because I don't think we're gouging them, but we're asking them to contribute voluntarily, but through the fees.
Because the parents didn't give a break to non-residents for their lessons when our pool closed. I mean, parents have told me that they paid the non-resident fee. So, I mean, I wanna be sensitive, but at the same time, like, we need to respect the boundaries. Is kind of where I'm at.
I'd like to make a motion, since, we're, we're just freely talking without a motion, but I'd like to make a motion that we approve the fee proposal as amended for the non-resident, as we discussed, to be 15, 12, 58, 29.
Second.
Second, discussion.
I understand the board's role to set a policy. So with that, and with the process we're using here, if we charge a non, if we charge a non-resident rate, or this is the first non-resident rate charged in district history, I'm, I'm not willing to do that in this format by any way, shape, or form. I think it's a much larger discussion. I've had a lot of feedback that it's not appreciated and...
I, I don't understand, I don't understand the comment.
And then with the day-to-day operations, I've heard about it being a possibility.
We've always charged a non-resident rate.
We've always charged a non-resident rate on group lessons, but not on parent lessons.
Okay.
And that's, that's, that's the number I was on, yes, I'm sorry.
And, and for me, that doesn't, I mean, I, I don't, I, I actually looked at this and I was unaware of the fact that we didn't charge a difference and we, I think, again, for all the reasons that I've already stated, I think we should, we should have. So I, I respect that your opinion differs and that you have a reason for it, I do.
Further discussion. I would like to say thank you for bringing this forward. Appreciate it, appreciate all the work you've done, Director, with setting a new course with swim school and not doing business as usual. So I think it's a great way for...
It's, it's been that way, that's the way, yeah, I mean, it might be a little bit different, but the reduced, the reduced.
The reduced lunch, the free lunch.
So that was always advertised.
It was, yeah.
Visible.
Visible, no, you're right.
And we did change multi-kid discount too, to be 10% straight across the board versus giving an additional percentage for number of kids. Just because, I mean, I don't think necessarily we need to provide multiple discounts.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All against? All commissioners who voted aye, with the exception of Commissioner Hofmeyer, who voted nay? The motion passes for the fee proposal for swim school. If you got all these numbers right, you don't need a copy. All right, yes, ma'am. Did you say something?
Oh, I was talking to myself, sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt the meeting with a microphone, yeah.
So good. All right, staff reports. Aquatics Director. I got to swim in the high school today, that was depressing. Thank you. Fortunately, they were getting out as I was getting in, so it wasn't too long.
Work harder.
Keep reading. It was great to see, great to see that many kids in the pool in the summer. That was awesome. They've got a good group, which was, which was fantastic to see, yeah. And they were having fun, which is even better to see. And I will also say that not only did I get to swim with Al, which always makes me feel better, we'll talk about our age difference. But there, the water aerobics today at 11:30, thank you, was packed, there was 20 women.
Wow.
And, and they weren't all women, they had, we, there were, there were a few men, including one eighty-some odd year old man in there today. Oh, yeah, it, it was, it was a packed show today, it was really, really impressive to see. And with your numbers that we've had recently for open swims and everything else, I keep seeing the alerts pop up about, hey, we've reached capacity, which makes me just smile. Because that means folks really do appreciate the district and are using, more importantly, using their district, which is, which is awesome. So, good to see.
I like the post about the turbulence, I think that's really great because I think it's positive and it, it shows, I mean, it, it shows a focus on safety, like it reminds people that, that is our first objective. I think it was great. So will we, we'll get a copy of the fall schedule at the next meeting?
Yes, Julie and I actually sat down and talked about it today. I have hired five new ladies that are old enough that can, we can offer a sixteen open time a couple days a week.
Sorry, 5:30?
Probably not 5:30. We're, we're not there yet. But I would like, given how much usage we're getting from lap swim, I'd like to extend hours. So I'm working towards it, which is why I'm running live for our class at the end of August so that we can roll it out beginning in September. So, yeah. And I want to add additional water aerobics times and extend some staff on the weekends. So yes, we'll have it.
Questions?
It's related in that, just to see the numbers for one week attendance was sort of...
They are...
Super cool, yeah, yeah, that was like ridiculous.
Have we had like eleven hundred and something?
Yeah, that's, I was just like, that was one week.
That was one?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I was like, I think there was a mistake here somewhere and then I was like...
I double-checked because I was like...
No, that was, it just, it was one of those things where I'm like, it's validation that, you know, that we really are back and in fact, better than back. I mean, truly, like it was ridiculous, absolutely. And that's, we used to do like, look at, oh, absolutely, but you know, part of it again is that historical data where we can kind of compare things and you just go like, and I know, I know for a fact these numbers are dramatically different.
Oh, well, these are...
I mean, from, let's say, two years ago.
The attendance for a week in June, the last week in June were 1439 for one week.
I think that probably rivals some of our, some of our winter attendance numbers for a whole month. When was that year?
This year.
This is the last week in June. The opening day, the last, the last year. Yeah, sure, yeah, so typically we get a whole month, but it was a week. And that's, I, I honestly, I was just like, no, this can't be, and I was like, got it.
And I would really like to be able to start regarding you guys' weekly totals in addition to like a monthly overview because I think those nuances are, they're exciting to see when we get started and people correlate those two activities and things are often... I think it's a little bit... Hasn't slowed down at all. I mean, I thought it was gonna slow down and it's not, I mean, I'm consistently...
It's still hot.
I tell you, on July 4th, during the trade, nobody knew we were open and we still got those numbers, it's crazy.
Yeah.
So if anything, it's probably pick up a little, huh?
Those pools do say more capacity creates more interest.
Well, it's really interesting because there are a lot of posts online of people asking where, where's the closest place I can get swim lessons? And, and you know, and I just had this moment and I'm like, fortunately, there are a couple of like, rangers that are like all over that and I'm like, who are very informed and I was like, dude, awesome. But, but I was like, really, is that real? It is.
Do we even hold the law publicity though? I mean, we'll see what we need.
It's free, yeah.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think word of mouth for sure. We're gonna be able to handle more than what I think, what I thought we were gonna be able to handle. I mean, I got really lucky with the number of applicants that came in and the number of interviews that I've done in the last few weeks. And I have some really good, solid people that I, I mean, we just could not have gotten. And we have amazing lifeguards, I cannot say enough good things about them. They are doing a phenomenal job.
Have you reached out to Carissa saying, I'll get your name, from MWR? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You have? Because they do an MWR magazine every like two months. It would be a great place to put that. Because I think they would put it in there, because we're not advertising, it's not, you know, the Navy pays for that, so...
I actually just spoke with her earlier this week and unrelated to that specifically, we did discuss a document that we're gonna create that they can share on base of electronic data that will give military-specific information that explains how the MWR program works. And I also spoke with her about starting to roll and transition to an electronic check-in system for military people, probably starting September, October timeframe, so that we can eliminate the sign-in cheats at the front. So that, I think that will sight a lot of those people because when you come in there with, you know, the parents and four or five kids to sign in, it's, it's not very convenient for them and it does come up hard line.
Well, I was gonna say, it's, it's not efficient for us, that's the thing that would concern me more. I mean, it's great if, if, if it makes them happy as well, but for us in terms of productivity, like...
Well, it may actually slow down our productivity a little bit because every single person will have to be checked in on the computer, so we won't be able to help two groups of people at the same time.
But it also will eliminate...
But it will eliminate some of the per order and, yeah, it will help ensure that people actually get in in the order that they arrive. And since we're hitting capacity so often, you know, we run into this, if we pull a military family over here signing...
Then they miss out.
Then, then somebody over here, we need to pay cash, might miss out if we hit that cab right, just at the wrong time. So that'll make it more consistent for us and more consistent for them coming through as well.
For, for the, for the MWR stuff, that, that's awesome if it goes that route. If, if they're the way to get that set up on a tablet or something so you could run two systems.
Which we may do, I don't think.
Good eye.
I think one thing that Carissa mentioned though, she, she said, okay, these are the rules, they don't vary at all. Our, and our, our people that come in from there, they don't always want to adhere to those rules. So it gives us, you know, support saying, hey, this is the way it is, this is their rule, not ours, so you need to bring your ID or you need to do whatever your rules are.
And did, did we have a question though that keeps coming up? You know how you don't have to have an ID if you're under 16 in the Navy?
Not true.
For kids?
Isn't it, it's like twelve.
Ten.
Oh, like, I about, like, ten there?
It's gone down to ten, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Because this keeps being an issue.
That is one of the things that keeps being an issue and that was one of the specific reasons for the conversation. The other thing is people that come in and do not know their sponsors come in. And she was very adamant on both of those points, they have to know that information to be able to participate in the program.
Yeah, the kids don't know that. But that's something that, they, they, if they're gonna come here, they have to know, they, after the first time when they don't catch, you know...
It's the precedent.
And this is part of why we're going to give them the literature that they can share and we can share to try and educate the users, so that the parents will know, hey, I have to teach my kids this.
And it is, it's not us, it's MWR, it's like, we're happy to let you in, pay us the $5 or whatever it is we're charging. Or MWR will pay the, whatever it is, except you have to fill out this information. It's not that hard.
Did, did we ever get, I know one of the things, and if we haven't, I'm requesting it, I'll say again, but, you know, just in the universe, now specifically, but contract performance information. So in other words, if we have a maximum of, and I'm making up numbers right now, $50,000 on our contract with MWR, I admit it was maximum. And, and so part of a previous, part of a previous discussion was, was, was understanding where we, where we are in that contract maximum so that we can look at what additional, if we needed to try to find additional capacity. Right?
So I can break that out for you, it's a separate item that they need to include in the budget, so I can start with that. Yeah, I can start doing that, it's another mini recording.
Part of it is, or not even part of it, the entirety of the whole thing is, don't leave money on the table. If, if, if there, if the contract is 50,000 and we're only getting 40,000 from them, what do we need to do to attract people to activities, to maximize that? You know, because there's still, there's a value for everything we're doing, we just need to attract them.
And we need to possibly explore specific language with them in the contract because right now it's the contract that says, and I think our max on it's 62,000 or something like that, is it more than that now? He's over here giving...
Gang signs, 60,000.
67,000. But then there's an appendix attached to it that very specifically says what they reimburse for and the reimbursement rates. So those are the only items covered in the contract and it's open swim and lap swim. So if we could figure out how to maximize those better, yeah.
So one of the ways we can maximize, and I'm pausing because I have to, I think there's other ways to do it and I think those should be talked about at a different time.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Yep.
Okay. Staff reports, got everything, Matt's sitting in the back, don't want to leave you out. First question, I apologize because I was here today, I did not get my lazy butt out of the lane, walk down there and look through the window, do we still have bleach in your office?
We do not.
Awesome. Thank you for your health and safety, that makes me happy.
There is a bucket of the CASM hydropart that we use for pool only because in the event that I'm not here and someone does need to shop the pool, it is the only other place that we have to store it is the chemicals, is the storage shed outside, the chlorine shed, and I'm actually the only one that has a key to that.
Okay. All right.
Also for safety reasons.
Understood. And then how are things going maintenance-wise with the pool?
Very well, all of the, all of the equipment is running flawlessly. I have implemented a chemical treatment program that is cutting back on our use of chlorine and CO2 as well. It also has added quite a nice shine into the water and will continue to do so is assisting the filters and removing all of the smaller debris that gets stuck in suspended animation, which just gives the water a nice sparkle and blue color. There is a chemical that I use, I won't bore you with the details, but it does remove the metals from the water which were causing kind of a reddish hue on the white lines on the depth markers. That is, that is no longer a problem, that also softens the water to a certain degree. We had sent our barefoot speed drive out to be repaired and that's just to assist in prolonging the life of the pump and also to cut back on energy costs. I just recently received it back along with a tag indicating it had not been repaired, I'm not sure why. Coincidentally, it actually went to the same company that I used to use and still use back home for my business, Jacksonville, Florida. So I actually am, I have a personal relationship with the owner of the company whom I will be, I actually have attempted to contact this weekend and have not gotten a response yet, but we're intending to do so and try to determine why, if any reason, it has not been repaired. Because it was out for several weeks and so it's, it's just, it's a little peculiar that, that nothing was done. In regards to the hot tub, it has been rewired, I don't know if anyone's noticed, that is completely, all of the top lines have been reprowpped. I am waiting on a response from WMS to see when Wayne will be coming out to assist me with refilling and testing the pumps. Because it, to my understanding, it's not been even attempted to turn on since the lap, since it was originally shut down. So I'm assuming that the pumps are not functional, however, I've seen strange things happen. In the event they are not functional, we will have to rip them apart, replace all the motors. So that's gonna set us back again for a couple of weeks. And the sand filter is still in need of rebuilding, which I'm also in the process of. But as you know, I did, or I actually, let me retract and rephrase, my custodian dismissed himself, so I have been wearing that hat as well as my own. So unfortunately, that has been not necessarily placed on the back burner, it's taken less of a priority at the moment. Finding this other facility and day-to-day operations have been placed at the forefront. I did just hire someone to take his place, he will, I'm in the middle of training him right now. He does have some custodial experience, very little maintenance experience, but that's okay. He has the gumption and willingness to work, everything else can be taught. He will eventually be in here at night after all of our patrons have gone home and after all staff has gone home tonight. I think it'll just work out a little bit easier, nobody's getting his way, no way, he won't get in anyone else's way and he can be a little more thorough that way. The drains around the pool were causing an issue, I'm sure that you noticed, I was a little bit late. But the reason for that is, is I'm attempting to clean them out, just, I mean, start small is how I feel. So I'm pulling all the, all the covers off of all the drains in the corners. They are, pretty much every one of them has been blocked off, it's actually a question, it was a question of when the last time it's been done, now it's a question of if it's ever actually been done. In the event that this does not work, I will, I would like to form a little place that we allocate a small amount of money to be able to aqua jet those lines, basically it's just gonna be filling them up and putting a high-pressure hose, very, very high-pressure hose or possibly, it's like a bladder system at the end to run down those lines and clear them out of any potential debris, which is, it's pretty much just gonna be hair and body, to put it lightly. It is disgusting, but also very necessary. The, the lines in there are very, very, very long.
How much we looking at, Matt, do you have an idea of an estimate?
I can get you an estimate, probably the next week if someone's able to...
More importantly, don't get us an estimate. Let's get the director an estimate, yeah, let's get, let's get the guy who's, who should have the estimate, the estimate, thank you.
I would certainly love if there's, I mean, if, because I also heard potentially pumps, if, if there's, if there's a, if there's a big, if there's a, if there's a big blow, I, I would at least just love a heads up, like, meaning just so, just a forewarning as to like, you know, incoming, you know, of some sort, that just allows us to like brace yourself. It'd be nice. Even, it's not be like, I would like to know to the penny or I want to see the estimate, it's just more like, work back to it.
In the event that the pumps do not work, there are three existing pumps back there, all of which are at least a horse and a half. To replace those motors, we'll probably look at about a thousand dollars each. My labor will be, excuse me, substantially lower, but it will take me about a day, two days worth of work. Including, including the sand filter, you're looking at more than three days. But to, to soften that a little bit, obviously with the renovations of the hot tub, if we're half as successful with the renovations of the hot tubs as we have been with the pool then, I think that, that we'll be okay.
And I can tell you, swimming in the pool today, I, it was a pool day, so I had a pool buoy on, I wasn't doing flip turns, but I would have felt very comfortable doing them had it not been a pool day. So it was, it's clear, it was beautiful, so it's very nice, so, thanks.
And that also comes with some of the unexpected costs of, as you mentioned before, some of the objects that you're seeing. There's a reason why the pool looks the way it does now, it's supposed to have it before. I've been doing this a very long time, I take this very seriously. It's not only about safety, but it's also about presentation. Imagine all of, almost anything, presentation has happened about it, not more. You know, I can say, tell the patrons at times a little bit of the, you know, the nightmare story of the expansion joints, you know. No one has noticed that, but all of the...
Even developed it.
...in the sidewalk are in the, in the pool are now gray instead of black and white. And that was one of those things that it may not ever get noticed, but it was something totally necessary. But the first thing that they see when they walk in are two things, paint job and pool water.
Looks good.
Mr. Schrempf.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
So I, in literally five years on this board, that is the most detailed and informative, right? So it's not just about detail, but the most informative update of that sort of people I've received and so I, I thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you. I actually do, I'm sorry to...
No, 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 it's, it's okay.
I, I, I'm a bit trepidatious when it comes to things like that, I do have a tendency to be a bit long-winded.
It, it's, it's okay because, I mean, it's, some of, some of what you said, yep, didn't know what that was, but he clearly does, didn't know what that was, but he clearly does, like, that's okay. The other thing that I know I have said before, but probably, but not certainly in this realm, but is one of the things we probably want to keep in mind when we're hiring people is we want to look at the workforce program that partially or completely funds some employees. And we have, we, it's, it's one of those things that it's, for a period of time, like a six-month period of time. So for example, at the chamber last week, one of their employees was introduced and, and outed as that employee, which, but, but if nothing, if it did nothing else, it reminded me personally of that program. of that program, whether it be an office person, a custodial person, I don't know what the boundaries of that program are, but it may help us, help us find people and get them trained and into a, someone who is looking for work, into a good situation and give us what we're looking for at the same time.
So I had actually, I had brought up that before, I know personally some people that work in and for the workforce programs, I actually know some people that work in the workforce program, that run the program itself, I think it's outstanding. It was unfortunate, not necessarily how I had to hire someone, but because of the, it became so completely necessary, and I almost was in a spray bowl getting someone in here.
Absolutely, and I'm just, I'm mentioning it so that all the ears hear it, like the ones who've heard it before hear it again, and then everybody just thinks like, "How can I, is there a possibility in the future?" So I'm not being critical, but like, in the future, is there a way that I can incorporate those needs into my staffing plan?
I agree.
As moving forward, so, cool.
And also, it kind of, it deducts from the, we'll say, caliber of person wise. My interviews, I conducted several, I firmly were giving everybody a fair shot regardless of appearance background, whatever, you know, we are a tax-supported facility and, you know, again, everybody deserves a fair shot. That being said, the caliber of persons that I have received as my candidates have been, let's say, colorful. It has been an industry process to say the least. Again, I have a tendency to come off as, intimidating or bear-like was probably my favorite, but I do take this job and this profession very seriously, and I think that there's a misinterpretation of because of my appearance and because of just the way that I look, and sometimes maybe even the way that I carry myself, that this is more of a lax position, and because of the position itself, "Oh, custodial, oh, any idiot can do that." Absolutely not, because I absolutely hold my employees to the same standards I hold myself, and I do hold my standards very high. So to receive the kind of applicants that I receive, there have been a few shining stars, but there have also been a few...
Colorful. Dug, dug perhaps, less successful, yeah. Well, you, I don't think you'll get any argument from us about standards. Okay, cool.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Shane.
Robert Grills of Orders here, I guess, so I'll direct it at you. I have officially retired from my 40-hour-a-week volunteer gig. Would you thank that man for giving me my life back?
Yes, thank you for, actually, thank you both. Thank you for the time you've given us, and thank you for what you've done since you've been here, actually, and that goes to everybody sitting out there, so thank you all. I do appreciate all the hard work that this whole staff...
I would be absolutely remiss if I did nothing to that, nothing, and I accentuate the word, nothing that I have done would have been possible, I had nothing for Commissioner Hopfire's assistance. There have been times where I was not sure that we could hold off what we could hold up, but between his ethic and my ethic and our collective knowledge, we have really done some outstanding things here, and things that you may not even be able to see, and no one may ever see or know, but it's things that we know that will attribute to the longevity of this facility.
Christ, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it seems we're talking about Commissioner Hopfire, you had a couple things at the beginning of the meeting.
I think we worked through a few of them, so...
Anything else?
Are we the final board comment, or are...
We are.
I thought we were at director's report.
Well, we didn't have...
I thought we were still on staff.
I thought we did, I thought, do you have more to add, actually? Shane, you have to link it up.
I will wait.
All right. Director.
A lot of it was covered by one of these folks, and I just wanted to reiterate that these folks have worked so hard, we'll do that one there. I mean, it's remarkable where we've come, and I think that, you know, we've done the whole renovation, the physical renovation, there are still some things that need to be done, and, you know, one of those things is a hot tub, and there's, you know, motors here and there and all that, but the majority of that is, so right now, the next renovation is in process, and that's staffing. And, you know, as of last week, we were six hours away from when this program, the district program operated, number of hours, so we had, you know, six hours in a week fewer hours in the schedule. At that point in time, when we were at full operation, way before I came, we had 45 employees. So with this report, six hours away, we're looking at 24 employees. So people are being overworked, and everyone is fixing that as it's possible. So I think that's, that is a testament to what they're doing, to me it's, again, miraculous. We still have a lot to do with our technology, we still don't have, you know, connections between here and out there where we need it. That's something that, you know, is part of that change. I am now recognized by the bank.
Yay!
They know who I am, so I think that's kind of...
I've missed her many times.
On a call and grab.
Exactly.
I thought you said it was on a non-grab.
So that's all I wanted to add.
And they're still yet asking for something different as we discussed this morning, correct?
So they had told me that the last thing they needed was for Rex to be recognized as our governing officer. Yeah, just a little bit of history, I think the reason that this did not come up for us at any point prior to now is because Mount Morris was listed as the governing officer, so when Bill Walker left, it wasn't an issue, when Gino left, it wasn't an issue, when all those previous directors left, it was never an issue, because we still had a governing person on staff. So this was a new process for all of us, and I actually worked extensively with my contact at DOR to find out what we needed to do to be able to get it taken care of and to take care of our returns. But that is all taken care of now, hallelujah. And the bank had said that they needed an updated letter to remove signers on an account that we don't need to have signers adjusted on, so they just need Commissioner Merrill to contact them and let them know that petty cash is the only account that we're making changes to, and then they should be able to proceed.
Today when we talked, you said it was a phone call, or do they need email?
She said that you could just let them know, so I would assume a phone call would be...
Right. And so part of the problem we've had for the board is we didn't know what we didn't know. And so we didn't know that we had a problem without Rex getting recognized. We thought we had taken the correct steps because we had sent letters.
Yeah.
The letters weren't what the bank needed, because the bank needed to hear from DOR, the DOR wasn't hearing from the bank, so we were chasing our own tail trying to get this done, and we didn't know because they don't talk, for the obvious reasons that they're not supposed to.
Well, and like when I would go in, they couldn't tell me specifics, and they couldn't tell you specifics, because guess what, you and I were not signers on anything.
That's correct. And so they would, it was.
That's the real experience.
And it was a unique situation, so now we'll have that fixed, I'll contact Heritage Bank tomorrow, and we'll figure that one out. That'll be the last...
Well, it's unique, but we really need to document what, we really need to document what these roles are. Well, it's also though, it's like roles and authorizations and the who and the when, like, so, I mean, so that we have an understanding, because if we believed that as we rebuild, that we will, that we will not have, that we will have a zero rate of change, right? Change happens, and it's going to happen, and so we best do our part, and so you could put it in kind of a financial business continuity portion, because I like sticking with the theme.
Is there always two people at the time, if someone is incapacitated?
There should be, yes, and so right now, actually, the paperwork we submitted would make Rex the primary signer, and then Commissioner Merrill and Commissioner Holly alternate signers. So we already know that when we get to December January timeframe, we're going to have to change that again. Something I am doing is creating a outline of all of the steps that have to be taken, and when those things are required, so there will be a digital file as well as a copy and a binder for reference, so that, you know, if I got to buy a bus tomorrow, someone can grab that and they would know what to do with it.
Continuum plan, thank you. Awesome. Anything further, Director? Back to you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I mean, it was a city council meeting last night, one of our volunteers was getting an award, you're familiar with that, but the part I would like to discuss here is, the mayor and the city council spent three minutes gushing about the work we've done here, and how much show this board should be commended, et cetera, so that'll be on TV for a month, that's a nice thing.
It is a very nice thing.
You know, when I was leaving there, ran into the editor for the New York Business Times, she has reported on this facility since the day it was built. She said, "You guys, over the last year, have given that place the only year in its existence without public turmoil." Knock on wood knock, I know, I know, wood knock, right?
The gavel, which feels like an opposite.
So that meant a lot coming through with the news thing. I think a large part of that is, a facility like this is going to have issues every single day, I mean, every day. You know, I talked about how I think we have some steady hands on the tiller here in the past, and I think the biggest thing I've observed is, I think, I think a rising tide lifts all boats, and I remember when Rex came here, I didn't think the levy would get passed, we were out there putting on our game face and doing everything we could, but it was if the levy passed, and he kept saying, "When." And I think, I think that type of mentality lifts everybody around you, and, yeah, it's been an interesting year, right? We've got a really nice tree out in front here, we get to hang home up on it, come in here and make things work, and it's worked really well, so I just want to thank everybody for the work you're doing.
You mentioned something about the money not being paid, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, 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 so...
That was the shock.
Last year, so I ran into Christina Mayhew at a baseball game a couple weeks ago, she works for Mary Engle, the Island County Assessor. She's like, "I just want you to know..." So I don't know if you remember the email we got last year, that said, "Give us your levy cert in the next 48 hours, we're going to lose $195,000." She wanted me to know, she's like, "Shane, she's like, "I just want you to know, that's against company policy, I added the board to the distribution list, I could have been fired for it, I just want you guys to not screw it up this time." So...
Levy letter, electronic.
Yes.
Actually, we don't need to do the levy letter until...
So her insight was make sure the board is on the distribution list at all, as well, and to watch that 27th date because of where Thanksgiving falls this year, that it's not the 30th.
Every year, is that required?
Every single year, and this year more.
You're talking about the distribution letter, I feel like you're talking in shorthand, and I'm...
The levy certification, and it will be our attached approved budget this year as well.
Oh, okay.
Last year, we didn't need the budget, we just needed the letter.
Okay, so, but it was based on, in that case, it was based on, because normally what we have annually is a, here's levy distribution, we do have to sign that annually.
She had sent an email to one contact, and it fell there, I don't know if it didn't make it through or whatever, so 48 hours from the levy cert, she decided to add the board to the distribution list, even though...
Is that last year you said?
Yes. Even though it was against the board policy.
I can't remember that, okay, all right. She's not supposed to reach out to...
It's in the budget, she got along with it last year.
We did, but remember it was...
We submitted a whole budget...
Remember it was down, it was down to the final minute, I think.
Yeah, we had to have special meetings, or special meetings, so we need to outlook reminders.
I think Rex should be able to get it down there at 11 o'clock with the four o'clock deadline.
Yeah, we don't want to do that, we don't want to do that, so, lever and budget. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, this year, he now knows it's due, or it's, you know.
That covers everything?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Board issues, Shane?
The only, it's final board comments, but...
Thank you.
So that's my issue, I'm just kidding. The only thing I wanted to, the only thing I noticed on my page that I hadn't hit on was, you had, you have, you've said to me when we were having a conversation, and I wanted to bring it up in this forum, because you said, "Well, what is it that you guys want monthly?" No one can answer that, and I disagree with that answer. I do believe that we have stated what we want, but here's what I think I would like to do, if everyone's okay with it, is, because I believe that I'm aware of those things, I'll take a stab at documenting them and copy everyone, and then if anyone has a difference...
Reply to him only.
Reply to him only, or we can have a discussion if we need to have a discussion. But, I mean, I think, I think we thought that we did know, but there are things that over time have gone away, sometimes because they're not an issue, but it doesn't mean that we still probably should be looking at them. So I feel like I could take a stab at it, and then get everybody else's inputs, and so we could discuss it in August or whenever, if need be. Is that fair?
Great.
Okay, thank you, okay, that was it.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
All right, I want to thank everybody again, thank you again for all your hard work, volunteer, that was recognized yesterday by the city council, that was pretty cool, and it was great to hear those comments, especially from Jesse, who, considering some of the past ones. The next board meeting is Thursday, August 22 at 6:30 PM.
Negatory, that would be August 8. Special, or workshop.
The next regular scheduled meeting is Thursday, August 22, 2019, at 6:30 PM. The next special meeting is August the 8th.
At a time to be distributed.
At a time to be distributed, at a future time, yes. We will be as vague as we can. Commissioner Singleton will have that out, and we will post it well in advance of when that special meeting is going to occur, and that's all I have. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn.
Second, discussion, didn't think so. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you all.